But he routinely asks undocumented immigrants for monies. It's a business, and that's what we're dealing with today.
That is a, sir, that is a lie.
And he knows, he knows their...
I don't want to get heated, I don't want to get heated here.
He knows the status.
I don't want to get heated here, but mayor, you are lying.
You scream down the chief, and that's one reason...
No, I am not lying, I am not screaming. You have proof?
Thank you.
You have proof?
Okay.
There you go, lying again.
That's the reason you don't have access.
I'm going to change your name to Mayor Whitlire.
That's the reason you don't have access.
You are Mayor Whitlire.
You know, you know, and you're smart enough. You're exposing this mother and child to the authorities, and you're using them for the wrong reason.
No, I'm not.
The question of not checking another database is going to remain unanswered? Or, that's a question that I ask all of y'all. Because he was detained 50 days, and if somebody were to question your grandchild who's autistic, would you be, would you have the same position that you have right now in terms of them assuming that he knew what he was talking about, and he ends up in detention for 50 days?
Councilman Huffman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to move Kevin Murphy up to the top of the three-minute non-agenda list for three minutes.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say yes. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Next, let's call our next speaker.
Astor Mark.
Hello, City Council, Mayor. I come before you as a, none other short than a miracle. After 50 days of being detained, Emmanuel Garcia was freed from ORR, or federal detention, immigration detention, after 50 days. All because HPD, under John Whitmire's supervision, called ICE, and ICE referred them to ORR. You have Emmanuel here. I want you to question him like you questioned him without him being here. I want Mary Ann Huffman to tell him that there's nothing wrong with him, to his face, when you question whether or not he had a disability, because there was no official record. And thank, thank you to Mr. Davis for stepping in and to, and for questioning him as though we had his mother crying outside as a, as a ploy for political gain, for whatever. I'm not running for anything. I don't have an elected position in the city. We're not charging this family a single dime. In fact, we've gotten them pro bono representation because of the failures that the city has had with this family, because of the cities that the department had with this family. So explain to me how this is for me, how this is for them, how this is for the immigrant community here in Houston. How is this a political ploy? How is this political for us when it's our lives? Emmanuel's right here, Mayor. Ask him what you need to ask him. Emmanuel's right here. Ask him what you need to ask him. We're now going, having to undergo a very difficult and very costly process to try to get him what he deserves. And we brought you some receipts for you, if you want to take them. It's a certificate that says thank you for nothing.
Thank you.
And we want you to have this as proof. Who do we turn this into?
Thank you.
City Secretary?
Please make sure that you get some...
Next.
Maria Garcia.
Cesar, I just, I just had a conversation with Alana as well. I know, first, it just, you know, thanks for the work that you've always been doing. Thank you for bringing him back home to his mom. This is, and you know this as well, this is super complicated.
Absolutely.
And what I've been asking is for us to be a bit more thoughtful, and I'm trying to do that, about how we go about actions and what we say, and I don't know all the answers. I want to be able to be helpful in the space that, not, not just locally, but at the state level and at federal level. It's not, it's not healthy for our communities, specifically the immigrant community. I shared with, with Alana that two Fridays ago, I was going to show up to a Cafe con Policía with a community leader that has been helping lead these conversations with HPD. I, I need your help to help, to assist in figuring out a way where HPD is not totally not, like, not being trusted at all, because there are good folks there that are trying to do the work. We need to figure that out together, and I want to have that conversation with you. With the challenges that we are seeing, I know that there's a Prop A that has been brought up. But as we do these kind of, these kinds of things as well, it does present even more danger as well, where other laws can be created. And so, as, and this is just me, just literally just kind of pouring out to you, like, I, I need your help in a constructive way, as best as possible.
Councilman Martinez, I ask you to ask the same thing from, from everybody around the horseshoe, including our mayor, who, when he, when he, he has said before, and you have said it before, that you are collaborating with ICE, and then when it's convenient, you say that it's not collaborating with ICE. And that sends the wrong message to the community. We want to see a mayor that stands up with a population of one in four Houstonians is foreign-born. We're not talking about just legal migrants, I mean undocumented people. We're talking about legal migrants as well. And we want to see a mayor that says, that puts their foot down and says, we are, we are protecting the community, not calling what happened to them, not calling the model that we currently are working under a model for other cities to follow. That, that's, that has been said, and we have proof of all of that in writing, of comments that have been made by this administration and this chief where, where he has. Now, in my defense, I've served, I, um, a lot of people, I got a lot of slack for serving on the last mayor's police reform task force. I got a lot of crap from activists, but I did it because I believe, and I still believe, that having these conversations is better, at the end of the day, makes communities more safe rather than less safe. I don't want to see a tragedy happen from people running from ICE or HPD or anything like that. We believe in that, too. It's just, we're falling on deaf ears at this point.
And I won't speak for the mayor, but I do want you to know that I have been having conversations with him.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
And, and this is a tough, complicated space that we're in.
Absolutely.
And he recognizes it as well. I, I don't want you to leave here thinking that he's not supportive in any way, shape or form. I just need to make sure that, for me, I need to know, I need some help as well.
And, and we're trying to. We still, on record, I want it to be said, that we still tell people that if they're victims or witnesses of a crime, they should call HPD. That is on record. And I want to say this, and I know after this, you know, a lot of people are going to say, why is this, are doing that? Because that's what we believe. There's no hidden agenda here. We want people to report victims as witnesses, as, as victims of crime, because at the end of the day, that's what keeps our community safe. But at the end of the day, we can't have that conversation if there's things being put out on the media, not just from us, but from the other side, too, of saying that, that we are following what Trump says, and we are collaborating to the full extent. That doesn't help us either, trust me.
I know. I know, and I hear it as well. It's, it's, let's sit down.
Absolutely.
Sit down.
Absolutely. And I invite every one of y'all to sit down with this family, if there's a will to do so.
Councilor Castex, stand up.
Mayor Protem Castex, stand up.
Thank you. Cesar, I guess for me, I'm trying to understand what, what the ask is now. We all had an opportunity to look at the video, the police-worn body camera video, and I watched the video, and I thought the police officer was trying to gather information about this young man and where he should, how to, how to get him back to his parents. When I watched the video, I didn't feel like there was any malice or any thing that was trying to do harm to him, but it was more of a fact-finding, trying to figure out what do we do next. And so, when you come and say that things were handled wrong, you have to understand the complexity that we sit in, because I watched the video, and then I hear you talk, and I'm trying to find out, what is, what is the ask now? How would you like for us to proceed? Because based on what we saw, you know, the, the police officers were fact-finding and trying to get him back where he should be with his, his parents or his legal guardian.
So, I, I think there's, and thank you for asking that question. I think the immediate ask, the immediate ask, están hablando del video, y que ellos ya lo han visto. So, the immediate ask for is for the family to have access to that video as well, because they, we are only going by what actually happened. I mean, 50 days in federal detention, after the police report was filed with HPD, the missing child's report was filed with HPD, what, what lapse or what happened in that procedure that although the officers might have been acting in good faith, why didn't they check the other system for the missing kids' report? That, that's, that's, that's really a huge question that we have. Why have the police report was filed less than 24 hours after, after the police had an engagement with Emmanuel? What, what happened in that interim period that they just couldn't go look at the other system or make some calls within the system? Now, does that lead us to believe that the system is that flawed within HPD? That there's no communication? That, that leads us down a rabbit hole, really. So, and then the second ask would be that the, instead of having the chief come up here and, and the day after we came and spoke and talked about the truth of what Emmanuel really is, he, I mean, he's, 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 uh, he has the mentality of a four or five-year-old, and then for them to say that he was, that it was an old picture, when it was a new picture, there was a lot of not, there was a lot of facts that were, talked about as facts that were assumptions. This is Emmanuel.
Right.
He's 15 years old, yet he is, look how small he is.
Right.
And so, for them, there were so many things, and we've, we have the transcript, and we went through the transcript, and we have an answer for all the questions that the mayor and the chief asked within themselves.
Okay.
Of when the picture was taken, of why was it an old picture? It wasn't, none of that was true. And, and till this day, I want to, I want to, I want to have it on record, saying that this family has yet to hear from the city of Houston, in, in terms of even, even having a dialogue, not with me, I don't care about me, but call them.
Okay. Mayor, I don't know if there's still an investigation, and so, you know, what all we can say and do, but I think, you know, we've heard from both sides. I know we had some answers from the chief as well, so there, there has to be a sweet spot in here where we can contact this family after the investigation and try to bring some resolution so that both sides can feel like they've been heard.
Absolutely, and, and...
I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
And thank you for your leadership, and Councilman Martinez. We've all seen the documentation of four hours, then a paper of, of intervention by HPD answering a 911 call, doing everything possible to reunite Emmanuel with his mother. After exhausting all options, they did refer him to CPS, which you would normally. CPS made many attempts to relocate the family, then they referred him to the immigration center, where he needed health care, and he had an operation at the Texas Children's Hospital. I wish everyone could see the tape, because it certainly creates a visual, a paper trail, and clarifies what really happened. What concerns me most is what's in the mother and child's best interest. I think they're... Cesar is using them and giving them huge exposure right now to their status in our community. I think it's an injustice. Cesar knows, he may not have charged this family, but he routinely asks undocumented immigrants for monies. It's a business, and that's what we're dealing with today.
That is a, sir, that is a lie. Give me the...
And he knows, he knows their...
I, I don't want to get heated, I don't want to get heated here.
He knows the status.
I don't want to get heated here, but mayor, you are lying.
You scream down the chief, and that's one reason...
No, I am not lying, I am not screaming. You have proof?
Thank you.
You have proof?
Okay.
There you go, lying again.
That's the reason you don't have access.
I'm going to change your name to Mayor Whitlire.
That's the reason you don't have access.
You are Mayor Whitlire.
You know, you know, and you're smart enough. You're exposing this mother and child to the authorities, and you're using them for the wrong reason.
No, I'm not.
Mayor.
Show me.
Thank you, thank you.
Show me.
Call the next witness.
She's the next witness, Mayor.
Councilman Flickinger.
Buenas tardes.
I, I just wanted to kind of go on to Mayor Protem's comments. I watched the video as well. One of the things that we were told repeatedly was that he was non-verbal. And you watch the body cam footage, and that's just not correct. Now, whether or not he's autistic, from watching the body cam video, I couldn't tell if that was the case or whether he was nervous, talking to the police, certainly very believable that he is. I'm certainly not going to dispute that. But the comments that he was non-verbal just were not true. It wasn't accurate, and I too wish the body cam video would be released, because it portrays an entirely different story than what has been portrayed out in the media. Everything I saw the police doing, they were looking out for the best interest of the child, wanting to help. It was not until they couldn't find anything that they went to CPS, and they referred him after he said he was brought over with a friend and a friend's father, and that he didn't know where they were, that they sent him to what, the Office of Refugees, Resettlement, or something like that? I mean, you know, what has been portrayed in the media is 180 degrees from what we saw in the body cam video.
Councilmember Flickinger, correct?
Yes.
Emmanuel, that, I, we, we want to also put it on record that we may, that we did make a mistake based on what the mom had told us about him being non-verbal, and he does not speak English. But I invite you to ask Emmanuel yourself right now.
Oh, and like I said, I thought, I thought it was, I thought it was very viable.
I invite you to do it right now.
I don't want to do a show with the...
No, 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 no. I, I just want you, I just want you to, I want, I want you to, to talk, and I want you to explain to this family, why didn't HPD check with the other system, and why Emmanuel was detained in federal detention for 50 days? Do you have children?
Yes.
Because if you would have had children, and you would have had your son strip away from you for 50 days because somebody didn't check another computer, I think you would be standing here in the same spot. And for the mayor to take personal shots and say that we're charging people money, I want, I want you to hold him accountable and have him show all of you proof of where that's true. Because at that point, it's his word against mine, but he owes you all receipts, not me. He owes you all receipts.
I'm not interested in making...
But I want you, I want you to, if you, if you want to ask him right now, if you want to question him the way HPD did right now, we're here. We're not hiding. We are, we brought him here so that y'all can see for yourselves who Emmanuel really is.
Okay. Again, I'm not interested in making a show with a minor in front of City Hall, but I will grant you...
Neither am I, this is the truth.
Hold on, I will grant you that from looking at the video, I could see that, yes, autism certainly could have been in the realm of possibility. I don't disagree with that at all. But I also thought that it might well have been that he was nervous dealing with the police officers. I mean, and my point of view would be the same as the police officers who's never dealt with him. Now, obviously, knowing the child, you would know something differently, okay? But from what I saw in the video, the police acted completely appropriately. Now, maybe they could have run through another database or got the names, they reversed the names or, or whatever, but you look at the body cam footage, they acted appropriately.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Kamen.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to say to Ms. Garcia, I'm so glad that you've been reunited with your son. I think of everything we have, we're discussing right now, the fact that your son is back with you is what matters most. Mayor, I know in the past, I think one of the asks is for the family to be able to review the body cam footage. I know in the past, we ha, HPD has, even if it's privately, because we have to wait a certain time to release it to the public, have made those exceptions for the family to view that body cam footage. So I, I'm hoping we can possibly make that available to the family itself. Additionally, Cesar, in, in terms of what I viewed of the body cam footage, I do believe sincerely that HPD was doing everything that they could with the information they had. That being said, what many of us have discussed is, we have systems, and where in the system did this, did this fail? We had two names that, right, one that HPD was going off of, one that you had given, but why wasn't that caught, and why wasn't that cross-checked? So I'm not as focused on the video, because I'm not saying that HPD in that interaction necessarily did something wrong, but something along the way happened, and we have to get to the bottom of what happened so that this doesn't happen again. I'm so sorry for what you and your son went through, but I'm grateful that you had so many people around you fighting for you. And this again brings up the importance of legal counsel and legal representation in the, in these fights, but I'm glad to see that your son is safe and that you're well.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, certainly, I say, I agree with Councilmember Flickinger and Councilmember Kamen. Seeing the body cam, it's, it's very clear that HPD took good care of your son, and the fact that your son was in someone's custody when he needed an emergency surgery is, is a blessing, because certainly without that care, it, it could not have ended well. But, you know, rather than, than go back and forth in front of the media, you know, if you're working with attorneys, work with your attorneys to, to gain access to the, to the body cam, and, and to sit down and have a conversation. But I don't think there's a whole lot to be gained here with having your son, who is already traumatized, in front of all of these people, hashing it and rehashing it, you know, to provide closure, work in private, and, and don't allow you and your son to be on public display as something that we're trying to achieve. We're trying to get resolution, they're trying to get resolution for you, so work privately to allow them to do that. And, and, you know, let, let the media die down. I mean, people say, oh, he was snatched. Well, when you see the body cam, they talk to him perfectly normal, very calm. I mean, if it was my child, I would be grateful that they treated him with the care that they did. And so, I wish you all the best of luck and, and, you know, but don't allow yourselves to be on display any longer. Work privately with your attorney to get resolution. Thank you.
Councilman Davis.
Councilmember Carter, may I just ask a question? How is it, how is it just that you all got to see something that we haven't seen yet, and you have public access to it?
Councilmember Davis.
We as public people don't have access to that.
Cesar, let us ask some questions, please. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Brother Cesar, I, I want to, I want to say that first and foremost, thank you for your approach today. Lot better, you know, I understand the passion and the compassion. I have a grandson, I want to speak to viewing the film and the issue around some of this. I have a grandson who is autistic. In the extreme, you were using the height of your, of her son and God, as he being 15. My grandson is 11, and he looked like he's 16, because he's tall, he's a bigger kid. And I, I understand that, too. But from a...
I was just alluding to the fact that they said, Chief Diaz said that there was an old picture of him when he was 10 years old, when that picture was taken on January 20th, 2024.
Okay.
2025, excuse me.
Okay.
So that's what I was alluding to.
Okay. Well, here, here's the thing I wanted, I wanted to allude to in terms of the issue. He's back. He's with his mother, right? So the goal was to assure that he be with his mother, correct? Now, so there also was...
And that this doesn't happen again.
Well, see, here, here's the point. There were a lot of issues around the case based on the viewing. He, he indicated he came with friends, a friend's father, and, and didn't mention the mother. He didn't, he didn't, in, he didn't mention the mother in that, in that piece, in that, he didn't mention the mother. Other issues with name differences, that was another issue, okay? So, so I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is, it is the job of, that you don't be mis, we misunderstand you, you us, and to indicate, the mayor can speak for himself, I don't have to speak for the mayor, I don't speak for the council. But, but to indicate those things, I couldn't police the police. That's what we pay them to do, and you as a citizen the same, respectfully. So, but I think that oftentimes, these issues can be very touchy, but you want to make sure, and I'm, I'm a person, I'm not trying to tell you to be me, but it's the approach of a lot of matters that make the difference about how the matter's handled and the way it gets solved, you know? And so, hopefully and prayerfully, this will move forward, and that, thank God for this mother having her son back, and I just believe that HPD did the job. We saw it, they, they, they followed the rules. They were not doing anything out of line, out of order.
And so, the question of not checking another database is, is going to remain unanswered? Or, that, that's a question that I ask all of y'all. Because he was detained 50 days, and if somebody were to question your grandchild who's autistic, would you be, would you have the same position that you have right now in terms of them assuming that he knew what he was talking about, and he ends up in detention for 50 days?
Councilman Evan Shabazz.
Yeah, the time is, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And certainly, Cesar, you know, I have a great deal of respect and, for you and all of the work that you have done.
Likewise, ma'am.
But I certainly, you know, I, I work with young people, I'm a former educator, and I do believe that some of the information you got, you got from the young man. I do know that stories change with children. I think it would be very beneficial for the family to see that video, because we saw something totally different. We didn't see any mistreatment, and I think everybody up here would be incensed if there was any mistreatment of that young, young man. But I think, you know, you, you have a valid question as to why some, another database wasn't checked, but I, I, you know, and I can't answer that. But certainly, from what I saw, I saw he was not mistreated in any way. We were told he was non-verbal, and he was verbal. I did work with special needs children, and so, just me and my professionalism, I didn't immediately detect that he may have been autistic, because sometimes you can tell and sometimes you can't in a visual manner. But I think it would be so beneficial after the investigation if this family would see that video. And of course, this is a learning experience to do it better the next time. And so, I, I don't know, you know, what the objective is now, other than to maybe push forward to get that video. And I would certainly support you and the family seeing it, because I do know young people, stories change. I do know that he didn't identify his mother, and it's my understanding, he said he didn't want her to be called. Also, that he came to this country with an older gentleman and his son. So he conveyed a totally different story from what you are being told. But if you see that video, they say a picture is... But if you see that video, they say a picture is worth a thousand words. I think we could alleviate this, we could maybe move past any of this animosity that may be carrying forth. But again, I always am honored to be in your presence. I appreciate what you do. And certainly I know that you will push forward for justice. But justice in this case, I think, would be to allow this family to see that video.
And I want to make it very clear.
Hopefully, hopefully that can be done.
Councilmember, and I want to make it very clear, at no point did we say that they, HPD harmed Emmanuel. There, I want to make sure that's, that's very clear. We don't, we don't, we don't say the question, there's two questions, I guess, that arise from this. Number one is, is why wasn't the missing child's, this is a child. Why wasn't the missing child's database consulted, number one? And number two, ICE themselves released a statement, and maybe this is something that you can call ICE and clarify with them because they released a statement because we had said nothing about HPD until, until we have the statement from ICE that said HPD called ICE and ICE called ORR. And that is something that, a very low ask that you can, that we can ask you is to clarify that because they are the ones that said, that, they're the ones that said, and there's the media and, and we were sent that statement as well. And that's something that, from our point, that worries us.
Councilman Martinez, thank you for your leadership and being responsible. We've been in communication and know that HPD members is doing what's in the child's best interest by not prolonging this discussion because the mother and the child together, they have serious exposure. HPD has handled this, as I've said earlier, the way it should be. They're not ICE, they're not immigration. They're not concerned about someone's immigration status. They treated this like parents. They're men of faith, they're men and women of faith. And that's what's guiding them. And policy, my policy, responding and treating everyone the same. The young man was taken to Texas Children's Hospital. That's the way I want my grandson to be treated. And I would suggest at this point, the publicity and the notoriety of bringing them to City Hall is doing them severe damage. I applaud Chief Diaz. There were language skills used, there was every attempt to reunite this family. We celebrate that they are tonight and I think quite frankly, this has a good conclusion. Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like there's still some work to be done though, I really do. There's a few asks that Cesar was asking on behalf of Maria and Emmanuel. I think we should, we owe them that, I think they deserve the video. And I've seen the video as well and we can't deny what the interaction was. And it, but we're not focusing on what the ask is. And the ask is, if this happened to him, could this happen to someone else? And that's what I want to work on as well. I don't want this to happen to anyone else. And the other thing that I want to, that I want to stress is, there's a lot of courage going on right now. I think the immigrant community understands the challenges. Talking to several folks even in the last couple of weeks, undocumented for 20, 30 years, they know the risks before this year. Those risks have always been here for them. This community is such a strong community, resilient. Spoke to about 40 mothers three weeks ago who understand that they have to now prepare and find someone else to drop off their kids to avoid, avoid ICE stopping them. We are definitely in some ugly times, but there is still work to be done. And I think we can address some of these by first and foremost acknowledging this pain, giving them what they deserve, making sure that no one else goes through this as well. And then as we do all that, I'm going to stay committed to my statement. Be thoughtful about your privilege, everyone. Because this is not going to end anytime soon. And it is going to get harder. And we have to stop finding each other in opposite sides when there's not just the Hispanic communities, but the immigrant community that looks like a lot of us that is suffering right now. And that's what I'm, I would hope that in our thoughtful conversations that we can continue, that we can find some opportunities to ensure that every family feels safe. Because right now, 10 years ago, people didn't feel safe. Folks were getting deported 10 years ago. But today is such a more extreme space that we need to be very, we need to acknowledge it at the end of the day. And thank the courage that is in front of us because they do know that they're at risk and they're still here. And I appreciate that. In the same context, there's a lot of folks that won't be here or won't stand here because they are very scared. And so we can have the video for them, Mayor. If we can find ways that we can avoid these challenges that have happened already. I trust in you as well. I appreciate the open dialogue that we've had in such a complex time right now. I just think that there's work to be done and I want to make sure that we fulfill this work for this immediate family in front of us right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, be safe. Next. Maria Garcia.
First of all, thank you everybody for giving us the space. For those who are paying attention because everybody is doing so at this moment. But I understand. To the mayor. Thank you for allowing us to be here this afternoon. But also, no, thank you because I came to look at you from the beginning. I came to find help from the beginning because of what's happening with my son. But I did not have an answer. I was open to any meeting, to any meeting with the police, with you, with anybody, with the evidence, with the video. To see. How we were able to handle the case with my son. I tried to meet with you all for all of this, but I was not successful at it. And that's one of the things. And the other thing is. Nobody's using me for anything. I am a conscious woman. And the only thing that I came to do here was to fight for my son and to look for help so that my son could come home. But nobody else was doing it except for Cesar and Fiat and all the community. All the immigrant community who have supported me are the only people who have been here with me along the way so that my son could come home. Nobody's using me. Nobody's charging me a single cent for this help. Or the Fiat organization or my attorneys are not charging me a single dime. And nobody's paying me to be here. And nobody's charging me to help in my son's case. No one's asking me for money for anything. So to you, the only thing I have to say is, they are here on a volunteer basis and they are here and they are. And my son was able to come out. And first of all, thank you to God, but also to the attorneys. And I have faith that my son was going to be returned to me. So I'm thankful to God that my son came back. He guided the attorneys so that they would know how to defend my son and bring him back home. And I'm a little saddened to see the way you think about me. We are not people that can be used, that we are not puppets. We are a community that will want to protect each other and our kids because there's a lot of mothers that are being separated from their kids. And I think that it's up to us that we shouldn't have this up for that and our kids shouldn't have this up for that, especially not our children. I am here to fight for my son. But for all the parents who are detained, for all the parents who are deported, how are they going to fight for their kids?
Thank you. Next.
Gracias.